Oh, boy, we got hats, we got a graph.
I know.
We got graphs, we got graphs. Graphs. No, not graph, graph. Freestyle.
I'm all right, Esa. Hammont City Council Public Hearing Agenda, July 12th, 2022, 5:30 PM, roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing, item number one.
An ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Misha F. Samuel, owner to rezone a 0.313 acres of land from RS-3 to C-N located at 1102 North Cherry Street, per survey by William J. Bodine, PLS dated 2022, zoned RS-3, Z-2022-04-00107, Lacy Landrell.
We're starting off with all the number reading early in the game tonight. Just to review this case, since it has been a minute since we introduced it, this is a parcel, and the gentleman is looking to rezone from RS-3, which you'll think is residential, to full commercial, CN. Some of the land that all surrounds it is all either RS-3 or RS-11, so it is all residential in that area. There is a house on the north side, on the south side is a vacant lot, on the west side, across the street, is a vacant lot, and then on the east side is a house as well. This is in Council District Number One. He is looking to install a car sales lot, and it wasn't going to be a lot of vehicles, but he can speak to that far better than I can. The things that the Planning and, or the Zoning Commission in particular looked at when they were considering this case is to go from RS-3 residential to commercial is kind of a bigger leap. There may be some options in the middle, and I have provided those to the council if you wish to look at those, and I'll pass those in just a second. Perhaps the mixed neighborhood use might be a better fit. It still allows for car retail sales to accomplish kind of what this gentleman is looking for, but it would be, of course, up to the council to determine the best use, and of course, the feedback from the residents. We and the Planning Office have not heard much feedback from, from any residents. We don't have any opposition to this. There was no opposition at the meeting. However, in keeping with the overall land use plan for the city, this remains a mixed use area. So that may be why, you know, considering how this goes, is, is really up to the council in determination with the, being surrounded by the, the residential. That's, that's the real issue here. With all those considerations, the Zoning Commission recommended denial of this, and it was five to zero unanimous support of denying this because of the, the rezoning again from the residential to the full commercial. There may be a middle ground that the council may want to consider, but of course, the most important thing is the feedback from residents.
If I may, do you know if the Planning and Zoning looked at any of those middle grounds, or was strictly we just looked at, or they just looked at, commercial?
You actually have one in here now. You actually have one in here now, from Planning and Zoning, so he might can speak on it, since he here.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So when Mr. Samuel came before us, he was, uh, he had just bought the property. He was adamant about building it out for a car lot. So in the meeting, we suggested that he try to change to MX, but he went ahead and did CN, just because he just was adamant about it. So we, you know, we voted on what he went with, so that's why we did a denial. But if he went with MX, he'd have a basis, because they do have a store in the area. I mean, it is, it was not the best, it's not the best spot for a car lot, I'm just be honest with you, but MX would help his case. It would help his case to go ahead and build it on now, since he bought it for that particular reason, because he's not going to stay there, he's just going to put his car lot there. So, I mean, and he does have support for some of the adjacent neighbors and things like that. He's a good, he's a good guy, he just didn't know, he bought a piece of property offline, didn't know the zoning, and just got a bad case, so that's what we have with Mr. Samuel.
Mr. Collins. I'm gonna ask this a question. How long he had the property to your knowledge?
Less than a year.
Less than a year.
Less than a year.
Because a lot of times, and I know you don't have nothing to do with it, a lot of time, when people are selling property, they just trying to get rid of the property. But yeah, I don't think they be knowing the zoning. So when they trying to sell a property, they sell a property saying that it's open up for anything that you're trying to do with the property.
I think that's what the realtor told, ended up, you know, selling it ass. He got it, he got it into some kind of government assistance thing, I believe, if that's, if I don't want to put that on record, but I believe that's what he did. And like I said, he bought it offline, so he saw it online, bid at it, he could afford it. He said he'd been looking in the area for a long time, and he finally could buy something, so that's why he jumped on it. But he didn't know the zone, he didn't know the zoning of.
All right, thank you.
Andre, this, if we were to deny, or if it were to be denied, it doesn't prevent him from coming and asking for one that perhaps other people thought were more appropriate zonings, MXN or MXC.
You deny this one, he can come back with a different zone.
A different type, just not this one again.
Yes, correct.
This one would be prohibited for a year. So if you, if you deny this one, it's prohibited for a year, but he can come back and tweak or change his plan. And I will point out, in your, in your handout, so I highlighted both mixed neighborhood and mixed commercial. Both of them offer number 24, which is vehicle sales and services, but those are, those are lesser zonings, they don't have as many options available as the full commercial. So that's why the Zoning Commission had looked at potentially some other options.
Any other questions, anyone else from the public?
Kip, have you heard from the neighborhood?
Well, I do know, he did come to the last meeting, and he had a few signatures on the paper. I do know that one property owner that's close to it, to that property, does not want it in their neighborhood. And actually, he stated there is a store, but that store is way away from that particular property that we're talking about. So when you look at it, there are houses directly right around that would be affected by that.
Anyone else? Hammont City Council Regular Session Agenda, July 12th, 2022, roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Present.
Our prayer.
Most gracious, loving Father, we thank you on this evening. We come right now, just giving you glory and honor that is due your name. Thanking you, Father God, for allowing us just one more day. Father God, thanking you for touching us this morning with your finger of love, and our eyes came open to a brand new day. Father God, we ask you to continue to guide us, continue to keep us right now, Father God, from all hurt, harm, and danger, that we do not lean to our own understanding, but in all our ways, that we acknowledge you, and you would direct our path. Father God, we lift our city up to you, our state and our country. We ask you to continue to protect our police department, our fire department, our men and women that protect and serve, our workers of the city right now, Father God, continue to keep them. Thank you for them right now, Father. We ask you to continue to bless our administration, and ask you to continue to bless the council right now, their families in their districts right now, Father. We just thank you right now. On this evening, Father, we lift you up, thank you that we know that everything will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight, where you would get all glory, you would get all honor, and you would get all praise, and we just thank you for it all. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Now, for our pledge of allegiance, we ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're down to approval of our minutes. I need a motion for approval of minutes for our June 28th, 2022 meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Presentations.
Tonight, we have Civil Air Patrol, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jimmy Cox to come up, and he actually runs the Civil Air Patrol. Give us a tutorial, tutorial of what you do out there, how you help children, help the kids, students, and, and what goes on at the airport, please.
Civil Air Patrol is an 80-year-old organization. It was formed right before Pearl Harbor, and it's a civilian organization of pilots, volunteers, who work with three phases of our operation. The three phases are cadet program, which is what you see here tonight. We have emergency services, which we go out and do flood assessment, we do anything that, that's required by FEMA, or GOSEF, or any of the other state agencies. We also have aerospace education program, where we'll actually go into schools with aerospace educators and teach from kindergarten all the way up to high school cadets, or high school people. The aerospace education, from space program to cyberspace, to just basic aviation. There is also opportunities for young cadets to learn to get aviation degrees, aviation pilot's license, and stuff like this. They can, there's scholarships available. There's also scholarships, I'm sorry, there's also scholarships available for educational benefits, like if they want to go to college, or anything like this. There's three aspects of the cadet program. There's kind of like a, cadet NCO slash airman type projects. Then we have the cadet officer, that's when they go from, what these young men have done right now is get the Mitchell Award. The Mitchell Award is a very prestigious award. It's 15% of the total of 26,000 cadets in the United States earn the Mitchell Award. And after each award, it's a little bit higher, a little bit less percentage. The Mitchell Award also enables these cadets, if they want to go into the military, they can go in as an E3 into the Air Force, directly with no, they go through basic training. Once they get through basic training, they can become as an E3, which is about a $600 a month pay raise for young people to go into the military. Tonight, I'd like to present two awards for each one of our cadets. We'll let the, the mayor do this part now.
The first award. The first award is going to be for Cadet Second Lieutenant Bryson, Bryce Lynn. Come on up, sir. This is given to the national, by the National Headquarters of Civil Air Patrol, very proud of you, I know your family is as well.
My father was in the Civil Air Patrol. Another aspect of it was they would go out and search the rest of the pilots that are down, and motors, pilots, lost children, we've done all types of searches.
The second one is Cadet, Cadet Second Lieutenant Dylan Barfield. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you to you and families as well.
If we have the Civil Air Patrol in Hammond Airport, I'd like to thank the city also for enabling us to use your facilities out there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Housing Study, report.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and guests. My name is Joe B., I'm the current chairman of the Hammond Housing Committee, that has been working on behalf of, in, as directed by the city council, to review how Hammond could improve the quality of life when it comes to housing in the city of Hammond. I've got some other members of our committee here, if you'll stand up, if you're here, if you're in the committee. Just want to thank you guys, thank them for serving on the committee along with 15 other individuals that we've been working with this, with this study. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that the presentation that you're about to see tonight, or experience, is a presentation of Element One only. It's not the finished and final report, but rather an update on what the Housing Civics group has been doing, so that we can update the administration, the city council, and our citizens here in Hammond. At this time, I'd like to introduce Civic Services and their representatives that are completing the project for the city. Civics is a professional services consulting firm headquartered in New Orleans. Their focus is working on urban planning, disaster recovery, housing, and grant management. Civics clients are based throughout the country, including state and local governments in Louisiana, Florida, Texas, Tennessee, California, and Michigan, to name a few. Lois Colston has a master's in urban planning from the University of California, and has over 13 years of experience working in the public sector with the city of New Orleans and the New Orleans redevelopment authority. And Jared Genova has a master's in science, community, and regional planning from the University of Texas at the Austin School of Architecture. We're going to bring them in by way of Zoom, so they can do a presentation. I think I can say on behalf of our committee, they've been a pleasure to work with so far, and that they've been very reactive when we've got questions and so on. So just again, this is a presentation on what's been done so far in Element One, and I'd like to turn it over to Lois. Can you hear us, Lois?
I can hear you, yeah, I was just gonna say, I think Marc is working on the whole stuff.
Okay, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen. Everybody see that?
Yes.
First slide, okay. Just note, I cannot see you all when I'm presenting, so if anybody's raising their hand, or making a funny face, I won't know it, so feel free. Thanks for the nice introduction, Joe. I'm gonna get started, and I know things probably been a long day for us, so I'll try to keep it short and sweet. As Joe mentioned, we are civics, Jared and I are here to present to you just a summary of where we're at. This is the very first portion of that housing room study, and it's just a summary of what we've done so far. Future elements are gonna bring forth recommendations and further, I mean, into more detail about enhancement areas in Hammond. So with that, just a reminder, we picked off this project in late April with the kickoff in Hammond, and a lot of the stakeholders and a few members that are involved. And since that time, Jared and I and a couple of our folks at Civics have been working on collecting data, doing some data analysis, which led us here to the end of Element One. We provided the housing advisory, including a couple of databases and report last week, and also the preliminary presentation of which we're gonna go through now with just a few updates based on their comments. As you can see from the timeline, forthcoming is gonna be another presentation on Element Two, and at the end of Element Three, which will be the final report, is probably at the end of this year, before next year. Element One, the deliverables, I touched on those just a moment ago, but just to highlight again, we've got a report that was submitted last week, just outlining basic demographics, how we saw some of the main items the committee requested. Probably the shining glory in that report is our enhancement area identification process, which is data-driven, to come up with the enhancing areas that were recommended to you, and that you will see today, at the end of this presentation. The databases were another piece of the deliverables, and then of course, the presentations. And just highlighting some details about the other two elements, because I know it's been a while since you all have probably seen the scope and talked about it, so in Element Two, we're gonna be doing a deep dive into the enhancement areas, looking at the property inventory in each, assessing those properties to come up with recommendations and feasible development opportunities, and then also touching on infrastructure assessment of those areas, with a focus on safety, attractiveness, and just making them more connected to different features Hammond, and then also locations mentioned, again, at the end of Element Two. And then Element Three is really where the bulk of recommendations, and then some more research into other jurisdictions, that face some more challenges as Hammond and presentations at the end, and that will be our last one. For Element One, going back to where we're at now, these are the data sources that we're using. The last three on this list are heavily from the city, the buildings department and other folks that have helped us gather, and provided us with information that we needed to give you all a fair assessment of, of, of data-driven, a data-driven assessment of these enhancement areas. And I'll touch on what Joe mentioned, I appreciate his comments, we had a great, I feel, a great working relationship with Howley today, and anyone may come in contact with us, getting up to be very responsive and helpful in giving us this data, because I'm not sure how well aware you are, but we can only provide you with good recommendations if we have the data to back it up, so we really appreciate everybody chipping in and making sure we're getting the most recent data, and as much as we can actually pull from, from all of your sources, so we appreciate that. Some key highlights, insights that we pulled so far, we're mentioning, I will take this whole slide, there's a lot of information in here, but maybe just a couple things to point out, that won't be, I'm not gonna be surprised that when you see it in black and white, it's only a little bit jarring, but median household income increasing 3% between 2010 and 2020, go down towards CN, slide, and you see median sales prices have increased 45% between 2017 and 2022. The requirement we provided, and then some information that you can see in the later slide, we'll tell you where we got this information, but that's generally what you'd expect to see anyway, so it's not too much of a surprise, but again, it's just another reminder of how difficult it is. Multi-family housing largely concentrated around the University and ICP5, and then this last point about the floodways, the FEMA floodways, and the special flooding areas making developments potentially complicated. It's not gonna come up so much in Element One, but in Element Two and Three, you'll see us focusing back on that, that highlight. Just the next few slides are just some visual presentations about the different factors that Howley today is particularly interested in, because they are, so this one is just a concentration of single-family housing in Hammond. The dark blue is highlighting where there's a high concentration of single-family homes that were out by the airport. You can imagine the denominator there is that there's not probably as much residential, so which makes it look like there's a lot of single-family out there, but of the housing that's there, it's, it's single-family, basically, with that saying. Otherwise, down, in the downtown areas, where you see the high concentration of single-family, and then this next slide, high concentration of moving family, like I mentioned earlier, around the university and near ICP5. And then this next one, it's where your, most of your vacant properties, where they're, where they're scattered out around Hammond. So 1945% of the parcels that stand Hammond, broadly, are vacant. We used a couple different data sources to try to pull out easements and unviable lots, so we think we're pretty close. This is definitely not perfect, but it, it's really, really very close, especially at this high-level view. And then that equates to about 26.5% of land area that's being, currently. And as you can see in the legend there, those different shaded areas, that's your council districts, probably right here. This is the link records from the Department of Buildings. They are shown here, color-coded, based on the year that they were provided, and then on the right side, you see a total breakdown each year of the one, the two units, and then five units and above. The reason we broke it down that way is because, as you may know, Hammond's, that one's moving family at anything above two units, so that's the reason it's broken down this way. And then also something to, which is explained in the report as well, that 2022 data is only good through, or, you know, is only relevant or through May 2022, so that's why it's such a low number at this point. Housing sales, this is directly from the MLS. This is just showing you, it's out of right here, it's the last five years from May 2017 to May 2022, but the color coding over there is on the map, it is based on the type of property that was sold. So moving families, 29, in the last five years have been sold, and then single family, 861. And that's pretty much it for the, just the factors we wanted to, to highlight. I'm gonna hand it over to Jared Genova, my colleague, he's going to break down how we came up with the enhancement areas and methodology that we used, and then he's going to do the big unveiling of the enhancement areas themselves. Thank you so much. And we're gonna have time for questions and comments at the end, so thanks for holding.
Thanks a lot, Lois. It's great to be with you virtually this evening. What I'm gonna do, like Lois mentioned, is just run through pretty quickly the high-level methodology that we use in order to come up with these enhancement areas. One thing that's important to note, just as we start to talk about these enhancement areas, is that we use a very specific type of geography to break it down, and these are the U.S. Census block groups. So these are, these are geographies that are determined by U.S. Census Bureau every 10 years, so they change every 10 years, thankfully, between 2010 and 2020. Only two of them changed in the city of Hammond within city limits, so we felt that it was a pretty good way to, to break down all of these different data points that we had, and it meant that we could compare more readily across time, so we could really start to understand trends in both market demand, and then also what some of those physical conditions are, in order to determine what kind of enhancement areas are appropriate. So the, like I mentioned, the basic characteristics that we look at are the physical conditions and market conditions. Later on, in those Element Two and Three reports, that's, those are gonna be the characteristics that end up informing what kind of interventions might be appropriate in these different areas. But the, the main factors that we reduce to get some of these are But the, the main factors that we reduced to get some of these are redevelopment potential, market demand, and then other priorities that we discussed with city staff and the HAVD advisory committee. We then took all of these together, we looked at each of those block groups in Hammond, there were about 24 of them, and then scored them, weighted them, and then we were able to select what those enhancement areas are. So let's go through what a couple of those factors are, just so you have a better idea of how we got to where we're at now. So this first map that we're looking at is redevelopment potential, could be development potential as well. In order to get to this, we used three different factors. We looked at high vacancy and developable parcels, that meant that they were vacant based on our analysis, and also they were outside of the theme of floodway, not necessarily just flood risk, but floodway specifically. We also looked at areas that have high, high numbers of judicated properties, and also high numbers of serious code enforcement violations. These are demolitions and major repairs required. If you look at the map here, the green areas are the ones that scored the highest, which means that areas in northeast of downtown and just to the southwest of downtown were the highest-scoring block groups. You'll see that the block groups don't exactly match up to the council districts, but they do break it down enough so we can, we can identify different areas across the city of Hammond. Let's check out the next one. So this is overall market demand, used three more factors to, to score these block groups. We looked at climbing those building permits, particularly in the past couple of years, to show current demand. We looked at high population change, this could have been positive or negative based on U.S. Census data from 2015 and 2020. And then we also looked at high changes in rent across that same time period. So we saw in some of these cases, we saw high growth and high population changes, for example, so many building permits, and in some cases, gains in population, and others we saw high rent changes and losses of population. So again, that's what we're really gonna explore next time around, in how, how do we address those different characteristics? You'll see here that those high market demand areas are out by the airport, just southeast of downtown, and also southwest of downtown, south of the intersection of U.S. 190 and U.S. 51. Then we broke it down into different types of housing demand. So for single-family demand, we also looked at building permit numbers, we looked at changes in sales price, like Lois mentioned earlier, that sales price of 45%, that was largely driven by single-family price changes that we found through the analysis. And then we also looked at high sales volume. You'll see that the one that really stands out is by the airport, we'll, we'll come back to that, because we saw a lot of demand there, lots of resale, lots, and also up there greenfield development, which made a high score across all three of those factors. Let's check out the next one. For multi-family demand, there was a bit less variability across these, but we again see concentrations near the university, and then also south of downtown, looking at numbers of building permits and high sales volume during that time period. And finally, vacant parcel demand. We looked particularly at areas that saw high numbers of sales and vacant lots. This is something that could indicate a, a demand for potential development, so if these parcels are being sold, they could be being sold for the, for the reason to develop them in the future, so we wanted to look at what that speculative opportunity might look like here. So and then, we end up with our enhancement areas. So when we combined all of those factors that I just ran through, we came up with a final kind of total score for each one of these block groups. Each of the block groups, you'll see, had scores that range from one up to eight, and we tested these thresholds to really understand which, which ones were most appropriate based on all of those factors, including the factors, the priorities that we had discussed with the Housing Advisory Committee. And we landed on scores of six and seven, which would be what we would focus on for the enhancement areas. I just wanna note that large block group by the airport, 0032, we ended up eliminating it from our, from the score here, largely because of that very high rate of demand, looking at greenfield development and resale. So that's something that we're gonna probably revisit in, in elements two and three, but for now, we really wanted to focus on places that had high redevelopment potential as well. So what we ended up doing was weighting those factors. So that first set of factors, redevelopment, we weighted that so that it could balance out with that market demand. If we look at the areas that, that are identified here in these hash marks, you'll see the present area northeast of downtown, southwest of downtown, and then west between U.S. 51 and I-55. One thing I just wanna point out, these look like kind of hard lines, these look like strong orders. What I think is really important to remember here with these enhancement areas, is that even we know that these geographies do not necessarily match up perfectly with the neighborhoods of Hammond, how we, how we would approach it, and also things like council districts don't necessarily match up very specifically or, or clearly with these boundary lines. So if we think about these areas more as places to start, rather than places to end, I think that's gonna be important. And as we get to recommendations later on this year, we're gonna be looking first at these areas, but then also how else can these things be applied outside of the areas as This here just indicates by shading council districts one through five, where these, where the enhancement areas are. You can see they're, they're really spread out a bit, particularly across council districts one, two, three, and four. Seems that really five is the only one that, that made it out without one of the enhancement areas here specifically, but again, as that caveat, it's not to say that that's really where that hard boundary line is. We're gonna be looking at these more blurry lines than really hard boundaries. So in terms of what we've got next, our next steps are, like Lois mentioned, we're gonna go deeper into these areas. We're gonna recommend what kind of property survey we'll need to do in order to better understand these areas. Some, we have some information now from this high-level work that does give us a good indication, but ultimately, we're gonna have to look a bit deeper in order to feel confident in recommendations for these areas. That's what comes next after that, is developing those potential strategies and tactics for the existing or new residential development properties in each enhancement area. And then we're gonna be looking again at infrastructure needs, how we can connect these areas in different ways, and recommend ways to improve connectivity, attractiveness, and safety in these areas. And then finally, we're gonna be confirming a lot of this through survey and interviews. We'll of course be working hand-in-hand with the Housing Advisory Committee along the way. Their guidance has been really, really invaluable up to this point, and we know that as we move into our recommendations and we're getting into even more detailed local knowledge, we'll be, we'll be working even closer.
Remember that? Please, if you can, come and answer any questions. Everybody heard us say hello?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they were just, they were-
There was a lot of talking, but there was some, some here to that as well.
Right, thank you Lois and Jared, that was a lot of great information. They were just resetting the screen so we could see you all, so that, that was the pause. So thank you for all that information, I know that's a, kinda drinking-through-a-fire-hose type of a presentation, but I think it's a lot of great information on element one. Does, does the council have any questions, or administration have any questions?
No, I mean, it was, it was a good report, I've been keeping up to date throughout the, the study, and I appreciate that, and everybody's working hard on this study, and it looks like some very good useful information we have here, some of the areas highlighted that needs, you know, some redeveloping, I guess the next process is gonna be a lot, you know, a lot more advanced, and, and you know, you're gonna have actual proposals of different, you know, advice of things that we could do, and, and to help some of these enhancement areas, which, you know, District Four had a good, good bit of that, that in it, and looked like District Three, I saw a lot of the solid, you know, blue lines on those areas, and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what y'all come up with as far as some improvements, you know, that could, that could, you know, benefit, or maybe some opportunity out there to grab some, some development that would attract to those areas.
Great, yeah. That was, that was Councilman Divitorio, Lois and Jared. Yeah, all, all, all four of the five districts are really showing-
Yeah.
-enhancement areas, so it's pretty good, pretty good information. Anybody else? Anyone else?
I'd just like to comment on that. I wanna thank you, Mr. Joe, and the committee for what all y'all doing, and also I wanna thank Councilman Sam for putting this together, and the people that y'all reaching out to, you're really doing a wonderful job, and I think from this here point on, this is how we need to start doing things, get more people involved in what's going on in our area. So thank you again, Mr. Joe, and Councilman Sam for even putting this here together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wells.
Thank you.
Again, we'd just like to thank the committee for the work that they put in thus far, it's been great.
Real quick, I don't, the, the code violation areas highlighted, did y'all have that highlighted on there as far as certain areas that may have been more violations y'all, y'all saw? Was that, was that notated in that diagram?
I think they-
On the map?
It's not in the presentation that we just went over, it is in the report.
Okay, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Somebody in the audience, too.
We got an audience, we got a citizen that has a question real quick.
My question is for, this is for the Housing Committee, so I want to know if you're here? Good evening, my name is Nana Minima, 52 Whitmar Drive. My question is for the Housing Committee, but I do wanna thank you all for giving that good presentation, but if you all can share with us as citizens of this community, a little bit of background about, this is the element one, but what is it a part, what is it a goal of? Like I attended one of y'all's committee meetings, but just to give a sense, like, you're presenting this information, great, what is the purpose for it, what's the goal? That's my first question.
So the-
I'm sorry, there was, did you, did you list the goals, did the goals listed?
I don't think on this present-
Do you have the goals up there?
I don't think on this presentation the goals were listed. Do you have that handy, Lois? I can, I can, I can paraphrase the, the project. So the, the initial direction of the project was put on by the council, Councilman Divitorio asked for some type of a, actually put a housing committee together and said, you guys sit down and try to figure out how we can make Hammond better. So we met, oh goodness, a number of times, trying to figure out what's, some ways that we can help improve the city, and the thing that surfaced to the top was a lot of the blighted housing that we could, needed to see, and then there was discussion about the, the number of lots that the city is trying to maintain and, and having, having to deal with. So we didn't know what those were, so this is where we engaged civics to start this study. So it's a three, it's a three-element study, this is the first part of it. Element two's, they're gonna dig a little deeper, dive a little deeper into the data and start really analyzing the data through interviews and stuff like that. The, the committee is a 16-person committee, each one of the council persons selected a person to be on the committee, the mayor and the administration selected one, or was it each, each of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, each council person had two selections, so it's a, it's a mix throughout the city of people that's serving on the committee. Does that answer your question?
Joe, I just want to add the goals as they were framed in the, in the RFP, if that's helpful.
Okay, yeah. You wanna paraphrase just the, the highlights of the different goals? You don't have to do each individual bullet point.
Sure. Yeah, so as we have responded, and as we've been presenting back to, and then the great question reminds me that I should be putting the goals at the beginning of every presentation going forward, so thanks for that. But these are, the goals listed up here on the screen, I don't know if you can see them, but basically the city and the Housing Committee are really interested in getting blighted property back on the market, right? And that includes the vacant, not necessarily blinded, but how do you get any property that's not being used to its full potential back onto the market, offering programs and policies that help incentivize rehabilitating property, providing affordable housing that's compatible with the character of Hammond is, is part of the goals, and capitalizing on properties that can be redeveloped for housing and provide infrastructure to help connect and create safer and more attractive neighborhoods. So there's been a lot of talk about connectedness to parks and other public assets for the neighborhoods. And then also, I think I mentioned this already, the last one, just programs and policies that are gonna help promote homeownership and assist lowering home, lowering home residents and senior residents to afford to stay in their homes and keep them up. I think that covers it.
Yeah, so the study has a lot going on, and I mean, it's, you know, Hammond's growing, daily growing, and smart growth is good, and a lot of times you may have to reach out to consultants, look at things that may, look at it a little different, and, and a different eye, and, and see things that may need to be improved or help, you know, homeownership, we, we were, you know, pushing that, you know, and, and there's a lot of, lot of deals, a lot, a lot of information on there, and a lot of criteria that we need to look over as a city. We got the, the flood study going on right now, that's, that's probably going to the next phase, and a lot of those parcels, as you mentioned, in a floodway and flood zones are not as desirable to develop right now, but if that study comes back favorable and, and they redo some of the flood maps, and some of those parcels that are on there, they're really not as attractive right now, they may be attractive, so I mean, there's a lot going on right now, you know, with the city on, on different studies to hopefully improve Hammond and continue, you know, making it a beautiful place.
Yeah, and maybe just to help piggyback for you, Councilman, is, when you hire consultants, it's helpful because we have a plethora of other clients and other projects that have been worked on, so hopefully that will come to bear in helping you with recommendations and those ideas.
Thank you, Lois. Anyone else?
Sure.
So again, thank you for that, like I said, I attended one of y'all's meetings pre-IDA, and I know everything went crazy after that, and then I called Ms. Lisa one time, I don't know if that was pre-IDA or not, that kinda cast over, I'm like, when are y'all's meetings for people that are citizens, again, that are interested in hearing about it, because these meetings were open, is what I was told, so sometimes, like knowing what you all are doing is great, and you're all explaining that, so it helps us as citizens that might have an interest to hear more, or maybe wanna give our, you know, input to some of this stuff, that helps us out. But where would we get the information if we want to, you know, sit in for that, should we call Ms. Lisa, is there somebody else? I gave my email to a gentleman, but I know stuff happened, I got lost in the sauce with other stuff too, so if there's anybody in the community that would like to find out when are the meetings, if you can just give us the information and direct us to the right person so that we can get, if you wanna participate, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Sure. Thank you. Well, just to let you know, you hadn't missed a meeting. We just haven't been meeting because we've been waiting on the report and stuff to get done. So the only things that we've been meeting is with civics when they've got about.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because I was meeting April.
Yeah, so-
We started.
So our last public meeting, in-person meeting was probably in April.
That was a kickoff, right?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we had met over at the permit building, I think.
Yeah, and then y'all did, we did one here too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's always put on, on the calendar with the city and typically it's here unless this is being occupied. If so, it's over at the permit office. They've got a conference room there. So it's, it's, we always have to public, put our meeting dates on the calendar. So it's a public, public meeting.
Okay, so we could call, was I, was I proper to call Ms. Lisa?
Sure. Yep, Ms. Lisa would have it on the calendar.
She didn't have anything to tell me. She told me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you ever called Lisa, I mean, and, and she doesn't know, I mean, she can reach out to me or Joe or whatnot and we can, you know, get her information. So you can be caught up to date. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you, council. Thank you, administration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, you too.
Down to final adoption of ordinance, old business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Meshack F. Samuel, owner to rezone a 0.313 acres of land from RS-3 to C-N located at 1102 North Cherry Street. Per survey by William J. Bodine, PLS dated 2/8/2022, zoned RS3, Z-2022-04-00107, Lacy Landrum.
As we discussed in the public hearing, you have the report attached to the agenda. The original request was to change the zoning from RS3, which is residential, to CN, which is commercial. And so it was a pretty broad jump from residential all the way to kind of more of the extreme commercial. What you have before you are some other suggestions for kind of an intermediate zoning that would be mixed neighborhood or mixed commercial neighborhood. Those both allow for vehicle sales, which is, is his intent, but they do not, they're not as broad in terms of uses going forward as commercial. So we discussed how it's surrounded by a house. It's vacant on one side, vacant on another side, and then a house on a, on the fourth side. This is in Council District One and he is here tonight to answer additional questions or maybe present some additional information.
Good evening.
I just wanted to let you know, I talked to my neighbors on the house and this petition from me. So if you all want to look at it. I agree with it. So I just wanted to let you all know that. So thank you for your vote.
Ask you a question while they passing the sheet around. Look, y'all, one of the planning and zoning members are here. And they, I think they had asked you to, you try to do MXN. And they recommend that it would help you out if you look at MXC. Was they, did they tell you about MXC and explain it to you?
No, it doesn't matter whatsoever. Y'all want to do, you know, I just, and I was okay whatsoever. Y'all want to do. If you want to be, I just, as long as they get to go with you, I, I mean, it doesn't, you know. I just wanted to be, I could put my business in, that's all I want to do. So if you all want to put a different zoning, that's okay with me, you know.
Okay, well, and the reason I'm asking you this here, because this something that you all should have talked about before we got to this here point. Because what we looking at, and I think they, from what I'm hearing, that they was trying to work with you and tell you what would be best for that area.
Right. I'm okay with working with you all. I don't care, you know, as long as it's okay. I, I, it doesn't matter whatsoever. Y'all want to do with it, you know. So if you want to change your name to a different name, that's okay with me. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm going to ask you something. Did you, did you, you bought this piece how long ago?
I bought it last year.
Okay. Did you have intention to put a, a car lot there holding on?
Yeah, when I bought it, because the reason why I brought it is for my car lot, because I got a daughter. She got CP and she eighteen.
Yeah.
And it's like-
But did you, did you check on that property, see what the zoning was before you bought it?
Yep, yeah, we checked on it and they said it's okay. I called these people. They said it's okay. I could put a business there. I talked to certain people and I said, yeah, I could put a business there. So I didn't know. Until after I brought it, I went to talk to the zoning. They said they can't do it. I got to come see the board. So that's what I'm doing now.
So you, you checked in with what people, the city or the?
Um, it's small business. And that's what I've been dealing with since I've been doing my business. She, Bronda, she do everything for me. So that's who I call when I need something. That's the only person I really know. You see, I'm from Jamaica where I moved in, in ninety-seven. From ninety-seven to two thousand, I worked five different jobs. I was a welder. I worked on a garbage truck. I was a waiter. I was a busboy. I jumped around, jumped around, jumped around. That's what I'm saying. So I'm just trying to find something to take care of my family. So for between ninety-seven and two thousand, I just been bouncing around back and forth, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, one time I got three jobs. I didn't have no time to sleep. I moved to this state with five hundred dollars. You see what I'm saying? Five hundred dollars I move here with. So right now, I think I'm doing okay. It's a thank the Lord. You see what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to move further. That's all I'm just trying to do, you know. So I'm just trying my best to do what I can. I never, nobody never gave me nothing. I don't sell drugs. I, I just go to work. You see what I'm saying? So I work hard for what I got. So I'm just trying to take care of my family. If you ever have a daughter with CP, you understand, because most of the time, these CP's kids, they have their birthday by theirself. That's why we have our daughter birthday by the school all the time because I didn't have no friends. That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to leave something for my kids. That's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, well, what the problem is, is the, is the zoning. And in the process of buying property, and I, and I'm a witness too, we buy the property and thinking we can do one thing with it. Then we find out that we can't do that. So the problem is, is the zoning. It's the MXN.
So we could do that and MXN is cool with me.
Okay, but hold up, hold up. See, it shouldn't have never got to this point. I'm just going to be straight up. See, it should have been, that we all should have sat down and talked, where whatever zoning that you was trying to do, it should have been explained to you. Now, I don't know whether it explained to you or not. We got MXN on here, but like they was telling you to use MXC. So-
Right, I think I was supposed to get with you and I get with you. Then they said they going to call me. Nobody never called me. So when I come, I thought everything was okay. It was not okay. So I've been just getting, pushing around all this time. I've been this many, five times now. I feel like giving up. You see what I'm saying? Because I'm trying. And it's like, nobody ain't trying to help me. You see what I'm saying? I'm just doing all this by myself. And it's hard for Detroit if I've been there. I try to take, go to work, take care of kids, do five, six things at a time. And there's nobody. Just you doing everything. And so I feel like, man, I'm just trying. So I've been here five times now, right? You all been by me for my face, right? I've been here five times now. It's not like I'm begging anybody nothing. You know, I'm just trying to get it for myself. You see, I know it's hard for black people to get along sometime, but I'm just trying. You see what I'm saying? I'm just fighting. So-
I, I don't, I don't think nobody, I don't think, I mean, I, I know I speak for myself. I don't, I don't think I have, I think you're, you know, a great person and, and look like you're a hard worker. That has nothing to do with what we have right now on the paper and that is, it's zoned, it's not zoned commercially. It's surrounded by residential.
I'm there signing the signature right there. All them know about it.
Isn't it, is it all, all residential and this would be spot-
Residential.
Yeah, it's all residential. This would be spot zoning. So therefore-
Everyone have know about it. All my neighbors, somebody want to build a fence. They had a one. He want a job. They had a one say, I want to stop and watch my car four o'clock in the morning. Everybody okay with it.
Uh, uh, but I mean, the whole problem is that they have zoning, they have zonings designed. We just talking about, you know, we doing a housing study, looking at all kind of different areas or whatnot. I mean, there's zoning out there for reasons and, you know, you really, I, I don't know if you're working with a real estate professional or not, but, you know, they're supposed to look into these things before you buy the property, see what is zoned and then come up and ask if we can get it rezoned, if you could have got it rezoned before you bought the property.
Well, they said, even I talked to Mr. Dangerfield and he told me, as long as those people sign the paper and okay with it, because he sign all my papers for my car. Mr. Dangerfield, you do all my paperwork for the cars, for my cars, right? Since I got my car business. And he told me if I get everything done, everything signed, that it shouldn't have been a problem. I did call him too. You see what I'm saying? So I did talk to people who I know. So what can we do? Can we do MXC? I get to go along. What can we do? I just needed to go. That's all I needed to do. I don't care what you want to put it on there. As long as I get my car. I don't care what you want to do. As long as you put my car up there. That's it. You want to put the MSC, DSC, PC, whatever. I don't care.
Well, the problem is, all that should have been taken care of before it got here. So right now, that's the problem that we're having. And we can't just switch it like that. You have to go back through the process.
Okay, so if that's what I, just like Steve obviously said, you got my to go fifty times, you know, you got to just keep going. I'm not stopped going. I'm just going to keep going. They lost me there when I was in the twenty. I feel like give up on the twenty when I was here. I feel like, man, just, I just feel like just walk up because I've been trying.
Well, I'm going to tell you this here, sir, and you done called me several times. And every time you called me, I tried to work with you, right?
Right.
Okay, so, and let's put it on record, like I always say.
Also, the mayor, the mayor try to help me all the time too. You see what I'm saying? So, I mean, the last time he told people, man, go ahead and do what you want. So I thought they changed MXC. You did went over there. I told them to do whatever I want to get it done. So I thought they put it to MSC and they didn't change it. So what we need to do now?
So Mr. Collins, uh, since you in the audience, you heard what he said, huh? That he tried to put it MXC.
It was his idea.
Okay, it was his idea, but see this-
Yeah, I was okay with it.
Yeah, so what the problem is, and this what's going on, and you calm down too, sir, calm down. You're going to be okay. Everything will work out. Yeah. What's going on, uh, you got a group of people that's trying to work with you.
Good.
Even right now, we're trying to work with you. So the zoning is wrong.
Okay.
And it should have stopped at the building permit office. They should have told you
Okay.
what was going on. So this the problem we're having right now. So it's nothing that you doing wrong. It's the process of what the city been doing is wrong. So it's not you. It's the city. So I'm just taking that for the record. So right now, uh, I see you got eight signatures on here, in which I did tell you to do this. But that zoning is not for that area.
All right, so we're going to change it to MXC, right?
Yeah, not, not just like that. That's where you have to go, to my knowledge. I don't even know. I think you got to start over again.
All right, Mr. Samuel. So during the meeting, I did make the recommendation that you needed to go to MXC. So with that, I remember you talking with the mayor and I think y'all rolled out and things of that nature. So with that, you need to go back to probably meet with Heather and re-sign the paper. Just refill, refill out the application. You'll be back on the agenda, what is it, July, August? We'll work like clockwork. It'll come back before the council. I know you've been, I know you trying to get, I know you trying to get the ball rolling, but it's a process. And in order to do that, like you, like with your lady, you need to talk with her. You follow their process. You follow our process and we're going to get you rolling.
Okay, cool. Done yet?
That'll work.
All right, so-
Well, man, you had to come up here and say all that, man, and y'all could have solved it six months ago.
So if I could just chime in on, it was, we, we did work very diligently to try to fix this when it came up.
I mean, uh, I mean, I'm on it. This is still going to be in the middle of residential zoning.
Yes.
Yeah, the property around, it's not going to change.
That's what I'm saying. No matter what you change the, the classification to, I mean, it's, it's still surrounded by residential.
Correct.
One thing to consider, I mean, they, Lacy's given us MXN, MXC as alternates.
Correct.
Uh, MXC has more uses that are definitely not residential. If you rezone this property, whether you put a park, a, a parking lot or a car sales lot there or not, there's some other things under MXC that certainly are not what they want to do. So I would say you should, MXN should be probably what you apply for. That's just a suggestion. MXC has too many other things, like a gas station. This, this table on the UDC needs to be updated. It's not correct. Okay. Cause I'm trying to compare them. It's not working.
Anyone else from the public? So you can come up and give your name and address, please.
Jackie Jackson. My address is 1209 Edwin Neilway.
Can't hear you. You have to speak into the mic.
My name is Jackie Jackson. My address is 1205 Edwin Neilway, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. I'm up here today. I have some concerns about my covenant. I have been asking for quite some time with several workers, as well as Robert Williams have been giving me the runaround.
Is this in reference to what we were just discussing with the rezoning? Or just a totally different issue?
It's a totally different issue.
Okay, well, we'll come back to that in just a moment. We, if I could wrap up this part with-
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Ask a question, please. So on this here, now that he have to go back to the permit office, will he have to repay fees on this here? Uh, or how will we do this? Or how would he have to do this?
One option could be that he withdraws this process, goes back in and basically amends his application. So then that would be under the same application, would not require a new permit. So he can withdraw this request before you vote, maybe to deny, maybe. But before you vote, he could withdraw this to CN, then go back to the planning office and amend it to MXN or whatever he wants to do. I don't think, well, it's, it's no final action taken. So he can amendment, amend it to whatever he wants. Then he'd have to go back to the planning and zoning to consider that supplemental request. That would be a way to avoid him having to pay another permit fee, another fee.
So sir, what would you want to do? Would you want to go back without paying another fee?
Yeah.
Or you want us to vote on this? Come to the mic, please.
Well, I don't know what to say. What y'all want to-
So the best thing for you to do right now is to help your case at this point is to withdraw
Withdraw.
your application, go back, refill it out, re-sign it and start it over.
All right, thank you all.
So Mr. Samuel, do you, do you want to now withdraw your application to CN and then go back to the permit office to request a different type of rezoning?
I think that's the best thing to do, right?
Thank you. We'll make a note of that in the record in the minutes.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, I would, I would then maybe make a motion to just table this item, take it off the table. You have to take some action on it. Well, if he's withdrawing it, then the matter is moot. We'll, we'll render the matter moot since he's withdrawing the, this request.
But for the future though, is it, and I know, and I'm talking, for the future, is there any way that we can handle these situation much better? Because I'm saying, we see how angry the man was.
Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, in this particular case, you buy a piece of property, you need to figure out, I mean, you, you know, the buyer, the owner has some responsibility as being the one who's buying it, starting business, do their studies and their inspections and see what's going on. And, you know, sometimes, you know, it's, it's, it could be, you know, a mistake that you make and you got to deal with the mistake you made and, and then move on. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, you got to, you got to go through the process before you buy it. And I mean, the proper way would be to go look at a piece of property. If you want to get a rezone, try to go up, get a rezone, put it in there. If it doesn't work out, then you don't buy it. So, I mean, that's kind of how the whole process works. And I mean, you know, I, I don't think that's the, you know, the responsibility of, you know, anyone but the guy who's buying a piece of property. So now if he was misled to or lied to by somebody, then that, that would be more of a civil matter, I think, between the, the guy buying it in the cellar if, or lying about it or the representation he had at that point in time. But, but, you know, we can't fix that. So, you know, that's all I have to say about that issue.
Resolution number one.
Resolution?
A resolution to reappoint Caitlin Douglas to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term to end on June 14, 2026. Mayor Pete.
Colin has been with us for four years. He's exactly what we're looking for as young individuals who are building their life in our city, uh, not moving away and, and being involved. And we thank you for your service. And I'm asking the, uh, the board to, uh, I'm recommending for a reappointment for Colin back to the planning zoning. Thank you for your service, sir.
Appreciate it. No problem.
Thank you, uh, for showing up tonight. And, uh, you know, I appreciate that. And I know a lot of these boards are very important for the city. And, uh, you know, you don't, you don't get paid for it. You don't do anything. It's just, you know, you're servicing time and, uh, you know, and it's, and they're all important that makes the city go around. And, and it's, and it's people like you that, you know, we need and, and we need to be up there and, and hopefully, you know, continue to making the city go, go where it needs to go. So I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, sir.
Colin, I feel like we just vote, uh, voted on you. Did you fill someone's term? Is that why this is happening again?
Not sure. Did I fill someone? I, I don't know.
I think he did. I think he's actually served a full term. Okay. Right at it. Okay.
I think we voted on him right when we came in.
Okay. Time flies when you having fun.
I'm running with y'all.
Uh, Colin, I have one thing I wanna ask you.
Go ahead.
I was, yeah, you, you all right? I see, I was looking over your resume. And one thing I see, you didn't do an up-to-date resume. And I wanna let it be known that Colin, Mr. Douglas, we reached out, we talked to one another. He the one, not me, he the one did the design on the new basketball court in Mooney Park. So next time you come, anywhere you go, make sure you add that on your resume. Because, and I wanna thank you, you know, and we can see, in which I know you passed by there, how, how useful the basketball court is. And for the record, that I always say, this one of the best, one of the best basketball courts in the city of Hammond, as of right now. So I think, I don't know if your next design gonna be for Councilman Sam. So I'm gonna ask you for the record, please don't make that basketball court better than the one on Mooney. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. I try my best. Thank you, council.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public on this matter? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you, mayor.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to appoint Craig Enman to the Board of Commissioners for the Tangifahoe mosquito abatement district number one for a three-year term from January, from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2025. Mayor Pete.
Uh, Craig Enman lives in District Two. He has worked for Shell Oil for 20 years. He and his wife, uh, living right here in Hammond. And my recommendation is for, uh, asking the board to appoint Craig for a three-year term for the mosquito abatement district number one.
Hello. Uh, I would appreciate your, uh, your vote, and I'll work my, the hardest I can to, uh, to kill mosquitoes.
We appreciate that, yeah.
Mr. Craig, how you doing? I have a question for you. Have you ever been on this board before?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, can you tell me anything about the Tangifahoe mosquito, uh, abatement?
So, um, uh, this is new to me. Uh, so, um, it, so I was, uh, I spoke with a couple of, uh, board members and, uh, they were explaining, uh, what they do. Uh, so essentially, this board oversees budgetary, what we do with the money and, and how we spend it, and also, uh, different areas that we'll target. We'll look at data coming in from, uh, CDC and other government agencies as far as target areas and give suggestions, recommendations. Um, so, uh, you know, but it's still new. So I'm not gonna lie and say I know all, I don't. But, uh, but I, I have a, a career of learning and adapting and, and, uh, and improving. So, um, with that, I think I can add value.
Okay. And one more question I have for you. What type of chemicals are they using for this here?
Uh, I would have to ask.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking this here, cause we, I see you come from a chemical plant. I'm gonna do a little homework. And I just wanted to make sure that we not using chemicals that's causing cancer.
Yeah, so I would have to ask Mr. Danny, Mr. Danny Wallett, to, to find out. Um, so I work for Shell Oil. I work in, uh, New Orleans two days a week. Uh, and I support the deepwater operations. So we produce oil and gas. So I would, uh, be amazed if anything that we produced, at least in, you know, where I work, um, that would go into anything, killing mosquitoes. So everything we may go into, goes into your cars. So.
Okay.
At least where I'm at. Shell, they may make a lot of other things, but at least what I'm part of and the organization that I, that I support, it's, it's oil and gas.
Okay. And you are aware of, uh, some cases been found for West Now in our area, right?
Yeah, I was made aware of that a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And you have my support.
Thank you.
I just, as a District Two resident, thank you for be, for willing to, uh, serve. And, uh, I've known Craig for a few years now and his lovely family. And you guys are really active, great members of our community. So thank you for being, for willing to give us your time. And thank you for sharing with us over there.
Anyone else from the public? And again, we thank you for stepping up to the plate to take on this responsibility to buy, sitting on this board. Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig.
Resolution three.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with D and H Quality Construction to erect a training tower for the Hammond Fire Department in the amount of $299,450. RFP 22-32, Chief Fooks.
Thank you. Long time coming. This is a, a project of mine that I've, I've been wanting to accomplish since I, uh, became fire chief. Uh, lots of hoops that we jumped through. We finally got a, a successful bidder as a local contractor, so excited and pleased about that as well. So just asking y'all to, uh, to give us permission and we'll get going on it.
Chief, can you tell us, just so the public knows, what this is used for and how it benefits us and why it's needed?
So essentially, this is gonna be about a four-story high, uh, training facility, which is, uh, basically the highest that we actually required by our, uh, property insurance, which sets our homeowner's insurance, our homeowner's fire insurance rates, uh, within the city. Uh, at the last rating, which, uh, which happened as soon as I took over, identified a need for a better facility than what we have now. So, uh, within this facility, it's gonna be four stories, uh, stairs that mimic several of the multifamily dwellings that we have, uh, even, even goes over into some of the confined space rescue stuff. Uh, it will be kind of, uh, I, I won't call it a blank canvas, but we'll be able to change it up as we go. Uh, so, you know, we can set the interior up one way and then go back and change it, uh, again in the future. Uh, we, we won't necessarily do any type of live burns in this, uh, in this, uh, in, in the actual tower. But we'll be, we'll use simulated smoke and things like that. Uh, but it's mainly for, you know, training above ground, uh, maze, things like that, that, that can help firefighters, uh, do a better job.
This will be significantly higher than the, than the, the building, the fire department building right there, right? I mean, if it's four stories, that seems very high.
Well, it's, it's four stories, but what we're using is, is storage containers to actually, uh, construct it. Storage containers are about nine foot. So, um, it'll be very similar in height to the current training facility that we have now down by Central.
So you made a comment about the, uh, about the ratings. Uh, would that affect any insurance right now? Or it wouldn't do enough really down the road to, to give us a better score for anything? Or not, not enough to do, do, do that?
We're not sure yet. What I'd like to do is get this facility built and in use. And then they actually have a, a program where they invite, I can invite one of the, the, the property insurance, uh, rating inspectors in, and they can do an evaluation and gives us kind of an idea of where we're at, where we need to go. Uh, you know, we're very, we're very close to maxing out. Uh, uh, about the only place that we can really gain in is training and then manpower. And so when you talk manpower, you're talking dollars. So, uh, but, you know, the goal is always to get better. Right now, we're a class two, and that's on a scale of one to 10. One's the very best you can get.
So we're probably already getting a pretty good rating. So I mean, even if.
We're very close. We're, you know, we're very close to the best we can get without adding a lot of more manpower.
Chief, I see that the, uh, budget was 275. Um, is this coming from Millage?
Yes, it's coming from Millage.
Okay. So you're, uh, the bid's higher than what you budgeted, but?
A little bit, but we're, we're actually pleased with where, where it came.
Yeah, compared to some of the other ones.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for the hats and the shirt.
Yes.
I didn't know they were doing that. They snuck that in on me.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone from the public on this matter? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Resolution number four.
A resolution updating the city's Section 504 Evaluation and Transition Plan and Summary of Previous and New Actions Taken to Identify Human Resources Director Diane, Diana Guzman McMan, as the city's Section 504 Coordinator. Charles Borsher.
I'll try to keep these simple. Um, both this one and the next one are simply a name change. Um, the current grant we receive for Mooney and Zemery Parks, the Love Louisiana Outdoor Grant, one of the contract requirements is that we name, physically name, the person who is these coordinators. So it's always been our human resources director, but they want the name. So it was Loretta before. Now it's Diane. So we're just making that single change.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any questions from anyone on the council?
Yeah. Could you explain to the public what, uh, Section 504 means?
Section 504 has to do with the provision of services. If you have a federal grant or you're receiving federal dollars, you cannot discriminate in the provision of services. So Section 504, um, is intended to protect, um, individuals who have disabilities so that they can participate in your programs or your projects.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution updating the city's Language Access Plan for persons with limited English proficiency to identify Human Resource Director Diana Guzman McMa, McMa, I can't pronounce her last name, McMahon, as the city's Language Access Coordinator. Charles Borsher.
Again, same thing. We're, we're just updating the name of the Human Resources Director. Um, this one's a little more straightforward. The Language Access Plan is for persons who don't speak English very well. When we last updated this in 2020, I believe, um, we were not required, um, our population doesn't have a large enough, um, segment of minority speaking, um, non-speaking or limited English proficient persons to, to require us to really do anything. We have some basic, um, assistive services. There's some toll-free numbers that are available through the state where if you have an individual that has difficulty speaking, um, English, maybe they're a Spanish speaker, you can call that 800 number. Um, and as I think most of us know, you can now get translation services on both smart devices. So, um, we're not required to do any, like, printing of things in different languages or anything like that.
Anyone from the public?
I would just also add that Diana is also fluent in Spanish. So that helps as well with that item.
Absolutely.
Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a three-year enterprise licensing agreement with ESRI in the amount of $82,500. Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council. How y'all doing?
Good evening.
I would like to request that you guys give the mayor permission to enter into a three-year contract with Esri. Esri is the software that we're using currently to do the internal maps and the city maps so that people can check parcels, check information and things like that. Uh, we're upgrading Esri along with a lot of the upgrades that we're doing right now with technology in the city to make it easier and user-friendly for the community, especially in our building department where we're doing some changes in, for growth and, and different things, just like we were talking about the study just a minute ago. We're gonna upgrade maps, uh, update parcel information and all of those things. But in order to do that, we're upgrading the environment that, that holds it, that, the house for it. So, uh, I would like to ask your permission to let us in, um, engage in this agreement.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this matter? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank y'all.
Report, mayor? I'd like to ask the chief to come up. Chief, if you would. Like to have him give, is he still in the back? Ask him to give us a report on the, uh, the gang violence update.
Yeah, we, um, since we enacted the, uh, gang unit, um, they've, we're able to make, uh, right a little over 30 arrests of known gang members or associates. Um, we are working with the district attorney's office to make sure that when they do get arrested, that their actually bonds are revoked. Uh, Detective Safuno has been the primary guy that's working with that. Um, we do have other detectives that are assisting him. Um, we, uh, currently working with other agencies to bring them in to pass the information along, uh, because as we all know, criminals don't know jurisdictional lines. So we've had an absolute impact. It's continuing to have an impact. And, uh, the relationship between the sheriff's office, uh, the district attorney's office ourself, as well as all the other jurisdictions and police departments within the area has made a difference.
Thank you, sir. Any council reports?
I have a few, uh, few items. Um, lighting subcontractor. Um, how are we looking as far as getting, um, something repaired, as far as, um, getting some kind of proposal put together on a, uh, contract to help keep up the lights?
We have not started a proposal, to my knowledge. I don't know, I, I don't think Jana is here tonight. So I can double-check with her in the morning.
Okay.
But we have, to my knowledge, we have not yet started that.
Yeah, can you get me update on that? Yeah, just stay on top of it.
I will say, related to that, and I don't know if this is also on your list, so I apologize if I'm jumping in the middle. But, um, we, I checked in with our electrician this morning, um, and he kinda gave me an update. We had received a large group of supplies from damaged things that had, a lot of stuff in electrical lights that had been damaged during IDA. And then after that, we received one first shipment of that yesterday. Our second shipment is expected either tomorrow or the next day. So we should be able to finish all of our light repairs here within the next week or so. Um, the only ones that are still gonna be out there is a set, um, that we're waiting on energy to feed. It's my understanding they are on St. Martin.
Okay.
Um, Route St. Martin.
Okay, cause I got, um, you know, all Anita and, and, uh, there's probably about 20 or so spread out through the Villawest subdivision. And then we have probably a street of, on Roma Avenue and a street on Anita with lights pretty much out completely in the commercial area. Um, and then, um, so yeah, so that, that was kinda priority right there. Let's see, uh, debris pickup on Pecan. Um, there's, there's, uh, some residents talking about there's a pile of debris pick-up. I'm concerned about another hurricane season coming and for us to get, you know, some of that cleaned up before another storm.
Where is this?
That's on Pecan. Uh, I sent an email a couple of weeks back from a guy who's sending it to me. I don't know.
Hey, Robert Williams and I looked at that. That's Darrell Smith's properties.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't really.
He's, uh, the, the piles we looked at were on his property setback. He's gonna need to get, uh, the gentleman who does a lot of his dirt work to come pick that up.
Okay, well, that was a concern right there. There's a stump that I keep getting called about on Morrison Boulevard that nobody picks up.
Joe Thomas, and it's, uh, it's a big one.
Yeah, I need, yeah, so.
Still hasn't happened.
I know. So I wanna keep that on the radar. Uh, that's been a while and they keep calling. So, uh, um, so, uh, ditches and drains. see, uh, ditches and drains, I, you know, I got Azalea and everything, Azalea area and Cecilia, which, uh, they were repaving the road, so I'd imagine maybe that's why that's a little delay on it. But, I didn't get a, you know, response or anything from that. Just kind of see where we're at. Speed bump, been a while on that one, on Rosewood Drive.
There was some question, uh, when I asked about that one with the building department, I don't know that everybody who was in that immediate area that was gonna be impacted by the speed bump had signed.
Yeah, they did. We got all the copies out. I'll give it to the lady. It was, we went through all that. They had all the signatures and the lady would tell them where to put it at, so, and, uh, and if that was the case, somebody should've told me that, uh, whenever that was found out. I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing or saying, but it's been a year. And so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been there and nobody, this is the first time that has ever been mentioned, so the signature's on there. That's already been put away, but we, we can go ahead and look at that again, but, but I'd like to get that one, that one done over there. And then, uh, nine, see, uh, culvert.
The signatures have been put away?
The signature's already been.
Street department?
Yep, they already been sent in, emailed a while back. I didn't follow back up during the hurricane, 'cause we had a hurricane, so I let that go, and now here we are. Let's see, uh, let's see, the Rose St. Martin garbage, that's, that's around that dumpster in the back. I just wanna make sure that we kind of, you know, the calls come in on there. I mean, I'm not gonna drive back to every time, but, and, and, you know, the calls, I mean, if we could put on the radar once a month or once every, just to kind of check that out, you know, 'cause, you know, that, around that little dumpster, they put the couches there, and it's better there than on the street on Rose St. Martin. So, I mean, uh, that's just something that gets a little out of hand over there. And then, uh, one other, other deal, we have, uh, I think it's Jackie. Is Jackie here? Jack? Yeah, she lives in my district. You can come up, Miss Jackie. There, there's a culvert issue on here I think she's having with, she's been trying to get explanation on what type of culvert to buy, to put in, um, and, and I think she's been waiting on that right now. Is that right, Miss Jackie?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been waiting a while.
Okay.
They told me they was gonna call. I never got the call.
Okay.
I just decided to come up here and find out the protocol.
I just, I just text Robert Williams. He doesn't know anything about it, so give me your number, your phone number, please, so he can call you.
985.
Don't do it over the mic. Don't do it. Don't, don't give your number over the mic. There's something y'all need to do on the side. It's, it's not good.
I just wanna make a suggestion here on, on that was, is there any way we can look at possibly, if we're gonna continue doing the culverts and the cement and everything else, is there a way that we could look at possibly getting a price on how much that average really costs or somehow and figure out what we can just say, okay, y'all, if y'all want a culvert, replace something, come to the city hall. We fill out a permit. This is the amount, $500,000, $1,000,000, whatever it may be. And then, and then when the citizen pays that, that fee or whatever it is to pay for that, then, then y'all can organize whatever it is scheduled instead of having to go back and forth, what type of culvert, whatnot, and.
It's not that hard.
I think, I think it might be a little easier if they would just go in and fully.
Prices change a little bit on the culverts. I'm putting some down in the location. Robert will get out there with you. He'll, he'll call you. You'll get together with you, tell you what you need, and then we'll, we'll find prices for you, 'cause it's easier to call. Concrete just went up to, I think, $165 a yard. So, the, the prices fluctuate. He'll get with you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Well, uh, to address the issue you had said, Robert said to you that he reached out to me. That's not correct.
Didn't say that.
Oh, well, whatever statement you made. Well, I called up to you guys' office and Robert came out. He told me he would get back with me, which he never did.
Okay, well, give me your number. Come on over here if you would.
All right, uh, you finished?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm good now. Thank you.
Okay, George Perkins Drive, 109. We got a house being built over there. It don't have a dumpster, don't have a porta can. And I think from the permit office, normally when we're doing construction, we're required to have these things in place. I know this is what we've been doing in the future, so I don't know. I done reached out to Bobby several times about the dumpster. He keeps saying it, uh, it's on delay, it's on delay, but yet, the debris and the trash is flying in other people's yards. So, could we please get a dumpster out there? But yet, we started having inspection at this house, but yet, we don't have no dumpster. There are no porta can. So, I would like to see what's the process of getting a porta can and a dumpster out at the house. The house gonna be completed and the contractor plan on building another house next to that one. And on Green Street, which, uh.
I'm sorry, sir. What's the first address?
Perkins Drive, 109. They built, they built a house there. On Brent Street, we still got debris on Brent Street, right off of Mississippi Street. I got debris on Florida Street, and all this here debris is coming from the storm that haven't been picked up. And I done mentioned Brent Street so much. Uh, Lord have mercy, I don't know if I need to get a truck or myself to go clean it up, but I keep hearing the same thing, and that's nothing. And I wanna thank the city for the speed bump on Natchez Street that they put in today. So, I do wanna thank the city for that. And Mr. Andre, I have a question for you. What is the process for accepting private roads into the city of Hammond?
Well, the ci, the council has to pass an ordinance to do that or there would be a recorded plat of a subdivision and lots sold pursuant to that plat. Or, the city could perform maintenance on certain roadways for a period in excess of three years. There's a, there's a few different ways for streets to be declared public streets.
Okay, 'cause this, last week, at the last council meeting, the mayor called me a lying councilman. And I wanna put it on a public record request at this record that showed some of the work and the repairs have been done on Dr. Boulevard, a private road. Public taxpayer money was used to do the work on a private road under this administration. I had a date and when the repairs was done. And I said that, 'cause what I did, I made a copy. Could you, could you pass that? Keep passing it, please. I came to your office, and this what you stated to me, that in order for this road to be accepted by the city, had to come before the council meeting. That's what you said. That's what you had told me. You can recall that?
Councilman, I really don't wanna debate this with you.
No, no, it's not.
What I, what I, what I'd like to say is, this, this was an issue that I researched very carefully and we obtained information on very carefully. What happened many, many years ago when that development was built was, we believed that there was a document that never got signed and recorded. Everything was in place to get it done as you typically do. I believe people within the city department at the time, and this is years ago, predates this administration, I believe that they just didn't follow through and follow the paperwork. Lots were signed based upon a plat of a subdivision with lots and blocks and streets, and the street was shown on that plat. My initial response is, since there was not an ordinance passed by the council, we wouldn't consider that to be a public street unless there was more information provided as to how were lots sold, was work done on the process. That was done in consultation with the developers and the current owners and their lawyer, who was hired to assist them with that. After a detailed exhaustive review of all the work orders, all the property matters that were filed to public record, and my own research, we had concluded that this, that a judge, if, if pressed in court, a judge would likely find that that was a public street. And so, my advice to the mayor was to consider that to be a public street. It's Dr. Boulevard. There are, there are healthcare professionals. People from the public use that road lots of times, and, and it's a road that came in disrepair. So, councilman, that was a, that was a, um, a call that was made based upon what I believe to be a likely result in litigation if that would ensue against the city.
Okay, that being said, when it became a public street?
Councilman, I'm happy to speak with you about this in private. I, I don't have a date prepared. I wasn't, uh, asked to give this information previous by you. I'm not prepared to do that today. I don't have my file with me. I'm happy to sit down with you. As I done, I believe I did copy you with the letter that I had sent on this issue. I'm happy to do that, councilman, but I don't think it's appropriate to do that in a public meeting.
Okay, I'm glad you said that. Okay, this was taking place. Work had been done on this here private street. And I think the lawyer, and I brought it to your attention, well, work had been done more than three years. And it was a private street at first, and so, and I'm quite sure for the record that it became a city street, but it wasn't up to the city specs, because in my community, I have three streets that I know that the city would not go do no work on because it's not brought up to city specs. I mean, I mean, I know this don't have nothing to do with you, but in the meantime, I was called a liar, and I don't appreciate being called a liar. Then all of a sudden, we get a street accepted into the city limits in 2022. And now, I'm looking at, on the record, uh, he was getting ready to fix, wanted to repair the streets, which was in my district, $225,000. It's not, it's not fair. We just don't do nothing like that. That ain't how we should do things, so. Which I did a public, uh, record request showing where all the work have been done on the street, showing who have did, who done done the work on the street. I got one, two. So, what I wanted to do, provide a copy to all the councilmen and the administration, and one to the Daily Star. And I want all this on record and put in the records, please, Ms. Leece, because I'm not gonna sit here and stand here or sit here and tell lies on what been done. And in my community, which is District 3, that when we're looking for something or trying to get something done, the first thing said that that's a private street, that's a private street. So, for the record, that it shows with the paperwork that I have highlighted that I'm not a liar. So, I'm sorry, which I wasn't talking to you, but you can talk.
Well, I just wanted to address a comment that you made. I believe that there's a letter in the file from the then-street superintendent, which said that those streets were built in accordance with city specifications. So, I think everything was in place. What happened was, there was just no follow-up at the end of the day to actually go through, because there was council approval for the development. And, and it's curious when you look at the second, I wanna get into the details, 'cause it's a very complex issue. There were two plats recorded, both signed by the then-city council president. There was a question about the dedication language, because that was ambiguous. That's what was filed. So, councilman, I, I agree with you. It was a very frustrating process for all the people involved. And once all the information was obtained and once the research was done, it was concluded that the sh, city should consider it's a public street. But, this is an unusual set of circumstances, not just in the neighborhood. This is a, this is a large, uh, commercial development that's been used by the city, and lots and blocks had been sold off based upon that recorded plat.
Well, since you still talking, did I tell a lie about the city been doing work on the street, since you still talking?
Councilman, what you, what you have presented is accurate in terms of the, the record of maintenance by the city. That is accurate.
All right, thank you. I'm through, Mr. President.
I just had a couple of things just to follow up on. Streetlights and abandoned homes from IDA and grass cutting. I got a number of them that were, that Robert was, that I was working with Robert on, and now that he's gone, I'm just gonna go ahead and send you a, send you a list of them, Lacy, so that we can get them, get them resolved. I've gotten, I've gotten just a lot of calls the last couple of weeks, and, you know, I just need to follow up on some of that stuff.
I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, Robert Morgan was, uh, top-notch, uh, always, you know, was able to, you know, get things addressed and, uh, you know, uh, congratulations on his retirement, uh, but, um, sad to see him go. Who do I, uh, you know, who's in his position right now? Do I just need to direct it towards you? 'Cause he's a thing, takes care of things pretty quickly, and I wouldn't have to get it done. The speed bump, it would've been done already. Robert Morgan was here. Some of these light, you know, it's, it's tree brushing, different things I'm dealing with right now. So, uh, he did always a top-notch job, and, uh, you know, and, and hopefully, we can continue that, um, you know, when he's not here. So, I, is it just email it to you right now temporarily?
That's fine. If it's code enforcement and you wanna copy Bobby Mitchell on it,
Yeah.
that's who's gonna be directing that.
Okay.
If it's more related to some sort of construction item that's going on, Pete Lentini is our deputy building official and has the certified building official credentials as well. And so, he's kind of assisting in that. We are triaging everything as it comes in. So, that's, we'll, we'll try to get back to you as quick as we can.
And you're just gonna follow up with the speed bump as far as looking and get it? Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, so right now, Bobby Mitchell, is he standing for Robert Morgan right now or what?
No.
No.
Okay.
Peter Lentini, we brought him in from the state fire marshal. He just passed his test. Uh, we've encouraged Bobby for years. I think he's finally gonna go try to take his test as well. So, hopefully, we'll have two, uh, building officials on staff, but right now, Peter just passed his. So, hopefully, we can move into him coming into Robert's position. We didn't think it would happen for about a year, but Robert, uh, decided to go ahead and retire.
Okay, so since we saying that, how many people apply for that job?
Applied for which job?
Uh, Robert Morgan position.
No one ha, one person has applied so far. That's it. It's, I mean, it's on the website. We haven't made any decisions about personnel yet. That's all open for discussion at this point, but there's only one, we've only received one application so far for building official.
Okay, well, it sound like y'all already know who y'all done hired.
I think.
We sent him off to school. He did pass the test, so he's definitely a qualified applicant.
Is this council-approved position or no?
Yes.
Oh, no, no.
No, it's a department head where the council has to approve or not?
I don't think it's in the charter. We can review and check, but right now, we're not even close to that point, so.
All right, two quick things. Charter review meeting date.
Lots of availability.
Set some, set a date.
Any day will be good for me except on a Monday and a Sunday, and I don't wanna take up my salary.
I mean, or, can we do that during lunch or anything, 12, 1-ish?
Melissa, do we want the charter, uh, committee members to come? That, that's a question for the council.
No, it's open if they want to, yes.
Wait, but do you, well, you want them to come, then we might need to consider that some of them have jobs, so it shouldn't be at lunchtime.
We gotta consider, see who could come, who not. You know, I can get them all here at the same day and time, I'm sure, so we need to, we need to get with them.
We circulated dates. I gave like 10, so I mean, I'm, I'm, I can make almost anything work. I'm just saying, if we want charter review committee people there, that's a lot more people you have to coordinate.
We need to figure it out.
We need to know that.
'Cause I don't think they knew about the dates when we circulated those dates. I don't think they were aware or notified. So, those dates, they were getting picked, or didn't include them. I, I didn't see it on there. Did you?
No.
Okay, so that's something new, but, uh.
Yeah, that's why I asked, 'cause we didn't talk about whether y'all want them to be there.
It's, it's for all of us. Uh, yes, we definitely need to get that going. Thank you, President, for even bringing that up.
So, again, we, we need to pick a date or something to try to start off with. Uh, I can go through the same process again and add, uh, I'm quite sure we have the email address for those that are on the, were on the committee, so we can send it out to see what their availability would be and, uh, go from there.
That's what I would think. You can include them, see what's good for them. They may pick a representative or, or two or, or something, and then you wouldn't have to deal with all five or six or however they wanna do it.
But if we just set a couple of dates right now and give them options, if we just say wide open, um, about next Tuesday. That Steve just suggested.
Okay, next Tuesday.
Afternoon, evening? No, I'm just.
Yeah, well, I can't say next Tuesday, 'cause I have to look at my calendar.
Me too.
Yeah, I just can't give a date like that. I know what days they had the city councilmen's on.
Okay, here's, 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 here's what I'm asking. Go home and check whatever your calendars, and, uh, what I'll do, I'll get with Ms. Lisa to see the availability of the building, even though, well, no matter what's going on, we still have the access to it. Uh, and send out some dates, and we'll send that same information to the charter review committee, to allow them the opportunity to either pick someone to represent them, or they all could come.
And I mean, really, you know, it's been a so while, so I mean, we don't need to really rush it for next week now, so I mean, just whatever. I mean, doesn't have to be next week.
Oh, that's, that's, that's a look.
Is Wednesday, is Wednesday and Thursday, work pretty much everybody?
Wed- Wednesday, Thursday better, Tuesday through Thursday range, yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
So, at least that will hold it down.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, that's, that's say it's gonna be on Wednesday and Thursday, then we'll hold it down to.
Yeah, a week. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you, guys.
Councilman, um, uh, President, I think we left out the nonprofit, when they gonna meet, and when we gonna distribute out the money for the nonprofits.
We have tried to call a meeting. That seems like a similar challenge, of trying to find a date that the five people can agree on. Um, so, hopefully, maybe the end of this week, early next week, we have all the materials ready. What we could do in the interim is go ahead and give it out to the nonprofits, and just have that committee focus on making the decisions about the funding and where it goes.
I'm glad you brought that up, cause the, my appointment hasn't even been reached out yet at all, so have.
I actually did email him twice, and I have had.
Okay, cause that's what I said, guy. He said, I hadn't heard nothing about, he's at me twice. I said, well, I said, maybe they hadn't reached out.
We, we had emailed him. I had tried to text message him, but that didn't go through, so, well, I don't know if I have a wrong number. I guess I'll check with you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and coordinate it again.
And how many times? I think mine's.
Your appointment was great. Yes, she's great.
Yeah.
She was giving me like, two weeks in advance, in terms of all of her dates available.
Okay.
Challenge is trying to get everybody on the same page.
Okay.
So, I, again, if, if everybody is okay with just sending out the application materials that we already have available, that we used this last time, and then having the committee make all the decisions to receive those applications, and to allocate the funds, I think that was the initial intent of the committee, that may help speed things along, at least in terms of the process, and then we could get the approvals back to you faster, because all they're then reviewing is the applications themselves, they're deciding the amounts to allocate, and then you all have final approval of the contracts.
All right. Thank you.
And the last thing I have on my list is this, uh, retention pay. I think we all received an email, uh, the other day about this, and I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that we were waiting on some type of, um, guidance, I would say, and, and how to move forward with this. I did talk with Andre the other day, and he gave me some information and some suggestions.
Yeah, the, the discussion was the problem with it being just a bonus payment for past services, and my concern was that it really needs to be for future performance, because there's a problem with retroactive pay. So, there was a recent, uh, Louisiana Attorney General's opinion that came out, dealing with the city of New Orleans that had a retention-type program or policy in place, and, uh, the Attorney General concluded that the city of New Orleans was okay to do that, because an employee had to work for at least one year before that payment would be earned. The problem is, if you're paying someone to retain them, you give them the payment, they could leave the next day. So, what you're paying for, you're not getting. So, um, my, my thought would be six months, because of the testimony that you had given previous at the budget hearing about the, um, about retention, about, uh, problems with, uh, keeping employees, employees leaving in vacancy, you could determine that that's a serious enough issue, that six months would be a sufficient time for an employee to stay employed, to earn that payment. I don't know that there was questions about, or, or resolution of what that payment is, how much is that, any of that. All of that was still up in the air. But the answer that I can, I can give you is, that you can make a payment to employees to retain them, but there's got to be some period of time at which they have to work after you adopt that policy. And I think six months is probably about as short a period of time as you could have for that policy.
So, that what you suggest, six months, right?
Yeah, one year, we know, based on the Attorney General's opinion, would be okay. What I'm saying is, because of the urgency, all of that, the folks that came up, and the turnover you've had, and, uh, that you could decide that, no, it's more urgent, and six months would be the period of time. I think that's about as short a period of time that, that, uh, that you could say, to still get some expected benefit for the money that you're giving.
So, this is, if we were to pass something like this, it would be, from the time we pass it, they have to work six months before they earn it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, it's future work? You're paying them for future work?
Yes, it's paying for future work. Then the other question becomes, well, what about someone who's hired within the six-month period? So, if you're a new employee that comes on, do you qualify for a retention payment, or is it just to retain existing employees? That's all, there's lots of questions that go with, with that matter.
I think we're getting a bit convoluted, cause I, and I know you said we can't do this, but if I recall, Councilman Wells was wanting to, I guess, have it more so, you know, payment now for sticking with us, which I know we can't do. Um, and so, I, I don't know if that, that, what you're saying even fits what that intention was. And I don't want to misrepresent what your intention was, Councilman Wells, but, um, this seems like a totally different idea.
Well, I know the idea was for some immediate payment. I know that was the spirit in which the council was looking.
Six months isn't an immediate payment. We're waiting six months.
No, ma'am, and what I'm suggesting to you is, you, you're really opening up for an issue, if you were to say, we'll give every existing employee this amount of money for the work you've done for us before. You could say, we'll give you money if you stay employed with us to improve our retention, but, but we know one year would be okay. I think six months would, in my view, would be the minimum amount that you would require someone to stay employed.
The only other option I can think of is that if you establish some sort of clawback, if you did the payment and then did a clawback, which is very, very.
Yeah, so if you gave that immediate payment.
You're saying a clawback?
Yeah, so, so, so that, what that is, is if you gave an immediate payment, and then the next day, or the next week, that employee took that money and left, well, you didn't get your bargain. Your bargain is, I'm paying to retain you.
That sounds like a mess.
And then you give them the money, then somebody's gotta chase after them and try to collect that money. And that's, that's just really, really difficult.
So, the challenge earlier, and we discussed this, if you'll recall, because of the way that the ordinance was passed, when we passed the salary ordinance that night at the public hearing, we had pretty extensive discussion of, we don't have any parameters for this. We, we don't have an amount. Uh, we don't have whether each employee would receive the same amount, or whether it would be different based on the position, or based on the number of years they had been with the city. Um, we don't have a when we would pay this time period established either. So, we, that, that's kind of up to the council to have further discussion, if you wish to pursue this, this matter.
I think that when we did that, we separated it out, cause it was in one item, of a, a pay increase and a retention payment. And so, I think I made the motion to change it. So, we just voted on the pay increase, and we did not vote on retention, and I, I didn't review the video, but I think it was, you guys present us an option, and.
I don't know that it was to present an option, cause we have no, we have no boundary.
Right.
I mean, I can't present you an option if I have no idea what you want. That would be like, here's, you know, give everybody the same amount, give everybody different amounts, make it based on part of their salary, make it based on option one of H.R. Nola's report, like, there's a million variables that you could go with, and I have no idea, and cannot read mine.
And now, we're saying we can't do it for it minimum, or, you know, the most would be six months, so that.
I think it's commendable that you've given them a raise, and increased the percentage. Um, I don't, I don't know that we have people, most of the people are happy. Obviously, not everyone's happy, but I would say the majority of, uh, the citi- the workers are happy with what y'all have done for them.
I think we need some clear guidance, cause people are confused as to what we've done, and what we are going to do, and who's supposed to be giving them what. Um, that's at least the, the feedback I'm getting. So, I think it's cl- it was always clear to me, we didn't pass a retention payment, but I think that that was not clear to employees. And if we want to do that, that needs to be voted on, and, and clearly presented. Um, that's all I'm gonna say.
Anybody else have anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh. No. Dana Menemaw, fifty-two, Whitmore Drive. I've been struggling with my organization about trying to retain people, especially nonprofit. We can't offer as much competitively as private, but, um, as Lacey was saying, and you all are struggling, I would say, you can pick three. Three is a nice number for me. It's just like, it's not too much. Pick three things, maybe as council, as a council that, like, potential options, that you were saying, Councilwoman Gonzalez, like, that the city can put together, like, um, some parameters that then come back to you all with, if you really want to do that, if it's shared out there, like you were saying, Councilwoman Gonzalez, to get clarity, like, either you're gonna do it or not, since people hear it, the sta- like, the staff are gonna be upset if they don't know there's not clarity. So, if you can, you know, say something sooner than later.
Yeah.
And I have a small staff compared to the city, so, um, but do that, that can help them out. It sounds like they're willing to do that, they just need the parameters. And also, I proposed something to my board, and they said, we can do better, which is great. I was like, hey, I just put this out there, I did a whole salary scale, but, you know, giving that to them, you know, sounds like you all want to do that and help them out. And we're in a recession, right? That's what they're saying. So, maybe that can help people just clear it up, if we're gonna do it or not, and then move forward.